Let's move on to then item number five, which would be discussion of regular meeting agenda. Vice Chairman, Sipple?
Yes, Your Honor. There's been a request to move number nine.
Okay. So, from the-
To the non-consent.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have an issue with moving number nine off?
Oh, hold on.
Non-consent, okay.
Hold on. Looks like numbers. Your Honor, it also looks like there's been a request to move S-14-7 or item number eight. So, moving item eight and nine off of the consent to the non-consent.
Okay. Then I'll adjourn the study session. I'd like to take two minutes, three minutes before we start up, but real brief, and then we'll start up the session. Thank you. 2014. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Vice Chairman Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Commissioner David Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Attending.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Brent Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Thank you.
Can I get approval of the agenda and a motion?
Your Honor, I move to approve the agenda with notations from our study session. Does that work, legal counsel?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion from Vice Chairman Sipple and a second from Commissioner Whitman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this is to item number seven, it's communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to response to criticism, asking staff to review the matter and comment upon, or asking the matter to be put on a future agenda. Is anybody here that would like to speak in this matter? I see none. Move on to the consent agenda. The consent to public hearing items will be heard at one time. One public hearing after the consent public hearing, these items may be approved in one single motion. At the request of a member of the commission or staff, a item may be removed from the consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added into the consent hearing and approved under one single motion.
I only have one, right?
Open the public hearing to see if there's anybody who wanted to speak on other matters other than the ones we've pulled off the consent agenda. Bring it back to the dais for a motion or-
Your Honor?
Yeah, approve the consent agenda. Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I guess-
Yes, and you'll-
Well, I guess I should have-
Close the, yeah.
Close and read the actual agenda before you make a motion to it. Since we've actually pulled off, moved items number eight and nine to the non-consent, the item on the consent agenda is item number 10, which is UP-14-10, which is Warner and Power Senior Living, which is approximately 19.7 real acres and located southwest corner of Power and Warner. And that's our only consent agenda item. So, now I would like to make a motion. Vice Chair Sipple.
I move to approve the consent agenda, item 10, UP-14-10.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman Sipple and a second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Okay, that moves us on to the non-consent agenda. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearing, anyone wishes to comment in support or opposition to the public hearing, item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment card, which is one of these green cards that are on the table in the back, indicating the item number you wish to be heard. And once the hearing is closed, there is no future public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So, let's move back to item number eight, which is S-14-07, which is City Gate, and a request to approve a Plimary Platt and Streetscape. And that'd be Jordan Fell.
Thank you, Chairman Ailer, members of the commission. S-14-07, also known as City Gate, is a request to approve 20 commercial lots on approximately 61 acres, located southeast of, excuse me, south of the southeast corner of Higley and Baseline. The zoning is RC on this site. This is the site in question. You can see it's bordered by residential to the east and to the south. The center section is, I guess, three-quarters of it is developed, or nearly three-quarters of it is developed, retail on either side. The existing zoning, again, is RC, and RC generally surrounds the site to the north and northwest, with shopping center to the west, and again, single-family to the south and to the east. Here is the preliminary plat, and again, north is map left here. So, they're proposing two or three entry features in total, and the design details behind that are shown in the Streetscape plan that was provided to the commission. 20 lots. The, I believe, they just actually filed for development on one of these lots for, I believe, congregate care. So, this development will include a mix of medical facilities, retail, and potentially even some hotel uses. Just quickly go through some of the Streetscape elements here. Again, the DR, I don't know if, again, but it's mentioned in the staff report. The DRB reviewed and approved this DR application on, what was that, August 14th? So, a couple of months ago now. What has taken this case so long to come to the Planning Commission is this ongoing review of their traffic statement. After several good meetings, I would call it an iterative process to get to a traffic impact analysis that traffic engineering staff is comfortable with. The applicant's done a nice job of addressing all staff's concerns, and that final traffic impact analysis is the basis for the condition staff is recommending you're seeing in front of you that will address. There's numerous capacity issues at this intersection, particularly going forward over the next five, 10, and 20 years. So, this condition will address those issues. There had been some discussion as to whether or not this development should tie in to the residential to the east. We received a letter from the HOA manager stating that the HOA board does not want pedestrian connection to this development that would have otherwise occurred in this location near Michelle Way. The master developer for the subject site is also wanting to go forward without that pedestrian connection. So, staff is amenable in this case since both the adjacent neighborhood and the applicant are both not wanting to provide that connection. Staff has not received, that I'm aware of, any concerned or opposition letters or anything of that sort. So, with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fell. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Cavaney.
I may have missed it, Jordan, but you mentioned something about the traffic issue at San Benito and Baseline, right? Or is it San Benito and Higley?
Well, Commissioner Cavaney, there, potentially, there are going to be traffic issues at each one of these driveways as they come out onto either Higley or Baseline. I was mentioning Michelle Way specifically in the pedestrian connection discussion.
Okay. Any signals planned at these connection points?
Yeah.
Okay. All three?
Potentially all three, although it will be based on how the property develops and what those warrants are as they develop. Certainly, two signals at a minimum is expected out of this development.
And they have the distance required between signals? Okay. Because it looks pretty close. But, okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavaney. Is the applicant here? I'm just wondering if the applicant wants to give a presentation or just want to hold back for comment.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Ralph Pugh, and I'm here on behalf of the property on our AZB side. We concur with the staff analysis and recommendation. We're unaware of any objections, so if we could listen to what someone might have to say, we'd be happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to call up Christopher Lockyer-Bretton. Could you come up to the microphone? Come here.
Yes, my questions relate to the next agenda item, the S-14-10.
Oh, you didn't put S-14-07 on your card. That's all right, we'll hold this for the next one. All right. Thank you.
Happy to answer those comments, Doc.
Yeah, those were tough ones. Okay. Well, do you have any other comment to that? All right, then, let's bring it back to the dais and close the hearing and bring it back to the dais. And counsel?
Chair, you may wish to acknowledge that there's an appendum to the materials?
Yes, and then there's an amendment to the site plan that was in our materials to remove the pedestrian access point that was on the previous site plan. So, this one would not have that pedestrian, which is going to be added to. Okay, so now I'd like to bring it back to the dais, we're closed, and see if we have any motions or questions or comments.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Unless we have comments.
Well, Commissioner Cavaney, you want?
Okay. I move to approve S-14-07, request to approve preliminary plat for City Gate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Cavaney and a second from Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. So, that brings us to item agenda number nine, which is S-14-10, which is at Recker and Ray, and is a request for approval of Plimary Platt for the KB homes. And we have Nicole-
McCarty.
McCarty.
Yeah.
I was almost there.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here tonight to talk about the pre-plat for Ray and Recker, also now known as Segredo, so some of your attachments might have said that on there. This parcel is located on the northwest corner of Ray and Recker. It is 16 and a half acres, and they went through zoning back in 2006 to convert to single-family detached with the PAD. They have an adjacent town well site near their property, SF-43 to the north, and are surrounded by SF-6 and SF-8. There was also a previous plat approved for this subdivision back in '06 along with the annexation. It kind of all went through at once. That plat obviously never went through. It had 62 homes, and the plat tonight is going forward with 57. So, here is the plat. The subdivision has three entrances, the primary one being off of Ray Road, which is a full-access entrance. The secondary is off of Recker Road, which is right in, right out. And then they have a third entrance over off of Ray further to the west, which primarily serves to access to the well site. As part of this development, Recker and Ray, the town engineer and CIP department decided to collect in-lu payments for those roads. Ray will be constructed when the property to the south is constructed. And the reason Recker Road is not going to be constructed right away is the town has a CIP project happening just north of the property. And so, instead of, and it's not slated until 2019, so instead of doing it in two pieces, they decided to collect the in-lu payment, and when that comes up, they'll do it all at once. This parcel is, the subdivision's going to have two open space elements. One is centralized, one is at the intersection of Ray and Recker, and they have tot lots and ramadas and that sort of thing. The development standards for this plat are set forth in the PAD zoning ordinance. As I mentioned, they have 57 lots, which is down five from what was previously approved. Their minimum lot area in the PAD is actually about 5,300, but their actual is closer to 6,000 on almost all of their lots. The maximum height is two stories, which, just to note, SFD does allow three stories, but back in 2006, they limited themselves with their PAD by making it two stories. During that process, the council also requested that the 20-feet setback along the northern boundary lots, because as you'll see in the aerial, there are large lot homes right north of them. So, the developer has a 20-foot enhanced setback along those northern property, that northern property boundary. So, here is the aerial. Here's the plat overlaid onto it. And what I want to do here is just kind of paint a picture of the setbacks there, because we have heard concern from the residents. There are a couple here tonight to speak to this. Again, that concern was brought up back in 2006. That's why that 20-foot setback was extended. But there is still concern about that. I just wanted to note that there's also a 40-foot rear setback required in those homes. That's for SF-43. That's for primary residential structures. They can actually do accessory structures in that zone, and it depends on the height of the structure, depends on the setback. So, the max height of an accessory structure is 20 feet, and at that height, they could actually be within 19 feet, which is comparable to the 20-feet setback on the other side. So, just trying to paint a picture of what can happen within that 60-foot setback zone So, at this point, staff is recommending approval of the pre-plat because they do conform with their zoning and general plan. I just want to note that I did include the landscape and plan, an open space plan. However, because this site is under 20 acres, that was, that did go through the administrative approval process, so staff has completed their review, finds that it meets all of those codes as well. But I just wanted to point that out, and I believe there are some residents here to have some questions as well.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? All right, I have one question. What if we wasn't, if the 20-foot wasn't there per, what would have been the required setback if that's not required in the PAD?
Chairman, good question. They did come forward with 10 feet, and that is what is required throughout the rest of the site.
Okay.
I can go back to the table here. So, their rear yard for the rest of the site is 10 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Would you like to come forward and give a presentation or just wait for comment from the neighbors? Okay. Okay. With that, I'd like to call Christopher Lockyer-Bretton. And if you could state your name and town of residence.
Yes, my name is Christopher Lockyer-Bretton. I live on East Orchid Lane, which is just north of this subject. The very northern line of the diagram there is actually Gale Drive. North of that is a five-acre county island, and mine is one of the properties on that, on the southeast corner. And the previous presenter talked about a CIP project to the north of this subject proposal. I have not been made aware of any such project, but we do have some items that we'd like to make the board aware of. First of all, the widening of Recker Road, which would be required, I believe, to accommodate this project, would mean that some of the land that's owned by myself and one of my neighbors in this five-acre county island would need to be obtained for the purposes of that road widening. The junction of Recker Road and East Orchid Lane has been and continues to be a very accident-prone corner or intersection. We've had at least one vehicle end up in the drainage or in the irrigation ditch there. So, we are rather concerned about the increase in traffic and the potential speeding that does go along on these side streets. There are a number of young children in our four-property area there, and pets as well. Because of the existing structures, it would mean that the road widening would leave the three properties that are involved with a significant noise issue. And on one of those properties, my property, there's also a large number of mature trees that would be lost to that road widening. As yet, we have heard nothing in terms of what the proposal for compensation would be, nor for the provision of any sound-dedning structure between Recker Road and our properties. The entry and exit from Orchid Lane onto Recker Road is a treacherous one to maneuver at the moment, and losing additional visibility, yet widening the road there is going to make it significantly more treacherous in the future. If there is information that the committee has on this new CIP project, which I believe they said was for consideration in 2019, if that could be provided to the local homeowners, I think that would be-
Well, that should be available through our traffic engineer and to the future. That wouldn't be directly decided per anything with- That wouldn't be directly decided per anything with this project at a basis that's actually through traffic, but we could definitely have you talk to staff, and they could get you the right phone numbers and get you that information, because it would be good for you to have.
Yeah, because I would also question the jurisdiction because of that being a county island.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
All right, thank you. Did Commission have any questions for? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Michael Tanner. If you could state your name and town of residence.
Michael Tanner, 3951 E-Scale Drive in Gilbert. I own the property. Does this have a laser? Oops, wrong one.
Oh, you knocked it out.
Does this have a laser on it? There we go.
Here, give it to me, I can show him.
That property right there is where I live. I was at the 2006 hearing, which they were initially doing the zoning on it. We felt at that time, and apparently your staff has gone through and went through the minutes on that, that we were not given due course, and for us being able to have, voice our opinion, any concessions given on the initial zoning of this particular property. It was just rubber stamped with a lot of things that are going on with the zoning, especially in the homes. I want to voice my opinion on it. The town of Gilbert is becoming way too dense, and we're going to become another California, which I am extremely disappointed in the way the town is being run and this manner of just putting as many houses to increase the tax dollars for the city on this. I'm a little disappointed, I wanted to state that right up front. I'm also concerned about the initial area in which the setbacks are set back. The information by Ms. McCarty is incorrect. That was always, the twenty-foot setback was always put there from the initial homes being put on along that northern part of it. That was not a concession that was given. We initially were requesting thirty feet given, so we would have a little bit of a buffer zone. There is no buffer zone. Our other, the other concern that I have are two-story homes being placed right along there, glaring into my backyard. I also have concerns regarding the wall height that they're doing along that northern wall. Around the well site, there is an eight-foot wall, and we would like to see that being brought to eight feet along that northern wall for that division, so we can have some privacy, for a couple of reasons. We've had a lot of people come in from the neighborhoods, the north of us, the Mendocino Valley, come into vacant lot that's just northwest of us and start fires. We had the city come over and have to put out fires of kids coming in that area, which is a concern, because we do have cattle, we do have horses and livestock in that area, and people coming over the wall to disrupt, you know, our personal property. We have annexed into the town of Gilbert, so we can have a little bit of say in how our property is being developed, but we felt like we've never been, have given any ear to anything and any concerns that we have towards our property here. I've lived basically in this area since 1974, which is almost my entire life. The same concerns that Chris had mentioned before about the traffic in the area is a major concern for us also, in addition to the seven schools that are along that four-and-a-half-mile area along Recker Road, which is becoming a major traffic hazard all along Recker Road, and why that many schools have been placed along that five-mile stretch. I've got no idea, and our neighbors cannot figure out why either. Charter schools, non-story schools, other schools in that area has caused a major traffic problem in that area, and we'd like to see some concessions given from the home builder about putting single-story homes along that north wall where our homes are at, so we don't feel like people are glaring over our, into our property, and also an eight-foot wall being put along that area.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from staff or from Commission?
I do. Mr. Tanner, have you met with the applicant at all to discuss any of this prior to today's hearing?
I have not. We have, there's been no information disseminated who it was outside of KB Homes.
Okay. I think there's two representatives here tonight. Obviously, now you know who it is, but it'd be helpful at some point to talk to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Benan Hughes and Esther Hughes. Okay. Can you come up and state your name and town of residence?
My name is Vion Hughes, and I'm addressing the Recker and Ray. And basically, I just want to make a very brief comment. It's, the way things, the expansion of the road is literally taking all of the remaining part of our property. At the expansion, it's, I don't, I'm not sure.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. The 175.
Is it up here or near Orchid?
Exactly. Okay, right in there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just point.
Right in here?
Yeah.
Or down here?
It's right in there, Orchid, right in there.
Right here.
Yes. So that would be our property, and it's basically taking all of that land, the expansion. And I just wanted to make you all aware of that, and that's how that expansion is affecting our property.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming down and giving us that information. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
No, I think I would just like to state that with the expansion of the roadway plan for Recker Road, that is obviously a CIP project, and so that really doesn't have any bearing on this particular case itself. I think Mr. Tanner's comments were specific to this case, but the road widening is really separate and apart from this particular action, especially because you live further north of the subject property. So I would definitely recommend that you get in touch with staff and talk to them and get their plans, the roadway plans, if they even have them yet, for that expansion, because really it doesn't have any bearing on this particular case.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Daniel Oxier. I am the civil engineer that's involved in this project. I live in the city of Chandler. To address some of the concerns, Commissioner Whitman addressed, I believe, very accurately and well, the concerns for the, sorry, I didn't, I'm going to butcher your name if I even attempt it, but, and then Ms. Hughes as well. But I would like to address Mr. Tanner's concerns. We feel that this is, what we are proposing is consistent with the underlying zoning that was approved previously. We do feel that the twenty-foot setback that we are adhering to, that we're perfectly happy with adhering to along the north, is sufficient to give that adequate buffer. An eight-foot wall is pretty inconsistent with the walls that you would see on a residential project backing onto a residential project. He does bring up a good point, the wall surrounding the well site is eight-foot in height, but that is because it is a, it is a, they're not of the same use. And for that reason, we feel that we should not be treated as a well site or as a commercial or industrial site, such as the well would be. While the developer's happy to talk to Mr. Tanner about his concerns, we don't feel that stipulating, making any additional stipulations on the project such as his request is appropriate. But we would certainly speak to him and discuss his concerns with him. We would also point out, one of Mr. Tanner's concerns is about the increased density that he's seen in the area. We would just point out that we're actually decreasing the density from what the applicant is able to do per the approved zoning. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, would like to add any more comments? Ms. McCarty? No? Okay. Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the diocese for discussion.
Chairman?
Yes.
I think I would just like to point out, when we review a subdivision plat, we don't have much authority to make changes, especially with regard to anything that may be directed toward the use or variances and the like. A subdivision plat really, when that comes in, has its guidelines and its basis is to conform with the town code and any underlying zoning category. And so it appears as though this particular case or this plan, as much as maybe the neighbors don't like it unfortunately, conforms to the PAD zoning district that was originally approved back in 2006, and conforms with the town's land development code. And with that, our hands are tied as a commission, unless we could see a deviation from the code, which staff wouldn't probably bring to us for approval if that was the case. We really can't, we can't make any changes. The best option you have really is working with the developer and seeing if they're willing to make changes by themselves and bring back a revised preliminary plat. But unfortunately, I think for us here on the commission, we, it's out of our purview. Our purview is to make sure that it conforms to code and to previous zoning categories or the previous zoning that was approved on the site.
Thank you. So do we have any other comments or discussions or motions or?
I just have one observation to make. Having been a civil engineer working in the town of Gilbert before on different projects, it's kind of unusual to see an SF6 zoning right next to an SF43. There is a desire to have that kind of a buffer and instead of such a drastic difference between the two different land uses, because it causes issues like we're seeing tonight. But I agree with Commissioner Whitman that there's not a whole lot, I feel, we can do other than just make the observation, but.
Commissioner Cavany.
So I want to make sure that the citizens that come down know that we're grateful that you've come down, and if nothing else, this at least affords you the opportunity to connect with the developer. This does conform to everything within our zoning, so as Ben said, we kind of need to move forward with it. But we appreciate you coming down and sharing your concerns. That helps us to understand the concerns going forward as we set other zoning approvals and variances and so forth. But at least if nothing else, you know who you can talk to now, and especially with regards to that roadway project, it really is a different group. It's more of the town's infrastructure group rather than this particular project driving that. So anyway, thank you though for your comments, we appreciate them.
Thank you. Thank you. So do I have any other discussion or a motion to be made? Commissioner Whitman.
I move that we approve case Z14-10, as staff has outlined.
Second.
I have a motion from Chairman, or Chairman, Commissioner Whitman, and a second from Commissioner Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. So that takes us to item number 11, which is none. So move to administrative items, which is item number 12. The minutes from October 1st, did we have any changes? Views?
I move that we approve those meeting minutes.
I have a second.
Second. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bloomfield, a second from Commissioner Whitman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. So item number 13, Planning Commission Administration, consider approval of the 2015 regular meetings.
Move to approve the 2015 regular meetings.
Second.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Sipple, or Vice Chairman Sipple, and Commissioner, a second from Commissioner Cavany. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Item number 14, Review of 2014 Accomplishments. Linda Edwards.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. This is just a list that really looks at your accomplishments as individuals, as volunteers in our community, experts in the fields that add to the planning commission. I think it's important to recognize how diverse this planning commission is, and it's amazing how much you accomplished in 12 months. You do help as commission to build the tools that we use to analyze these projects and to bring them to you. The planning commissions, one of the planning commission's major accomplishments every year is to help guide us with direction on what needs to be updated in the general plan, and that, of course, is based on the type of projects that you see or input from the residents or the business community. We do appreciate that input, and some of the projects that you have reviewed and helped bring forward are very interesting. Some of them are Top Gulf. We've seen it under construction. It is a new project to Gilbert, and compared to chicken regulations. I mean, there are such diverse types of projects that you work on. Recovery residences, new to Gilbert, a health service in our community. We had one major general plan amendment in the Santan character area, which took a few months to get through the process and ultimately failed for a land use change. You did direct staff also to look at the general plan update for the Santan character area, and one year later, you're starting to see the results of that work. A college use was added to the Heritage District to accommodate San Xavier University, which is currently under construction. A very large 400-acre project, the bridges, you worked with reviewing plats so that the lots and the design could accommodate what the market was asking for. It is a very successful project with over 10 builders. In February, the project that you saw tonight, City Gate, has been entitled from your work in February when it was rezoned to regional commercial. A senior housing project, the first that was able to take advantage of a planned area development purpose in the land development code to permit more intensity and density for senior housing. So that was something that was thought of years in advance and how to accommodate the needs in our community specifically for seniors, and that was your first project approving that extra additional square footage. The Gateway Character Area, little by little, is starting to develop, as you saw tonight in this project that you just saw, but also Fincher Fields, which is now getting closer and closer to the Village Center. So we're still very excited about what that Village Center will be in Cooley Station, in the Gateway Character Area, as you hold true to the line of providing that transition of densities and product types and diversity that will support the Village Center. In April, you've been involved in stakeholder meetings. We took your direction, moved forward, had stakeholder meetings, and Town Council approved new, unique findings for multifamily when proposed in regional commercial, and you have had to use them to make decisions and to provide recommendations to our Town Council. We're also starting to see glimpses of how existing approvals need to be modified to accommodate what Gilbert needs now. The enclave, 20 large lots were split in half and is moving forward with construction because adjacent to it is now regional commercial with a congregate care adjacent to it. So things are changing, and with your direction and reasoning, these projects are moving forward. In April and May, there were Santan character In April and May, there were Santan character area open houses, and commissioners attended and got firsthand communication and input from the residents of the Santan character area. In June, you saw a project, the first in Cooley Station, that asked for a change in product type, and the commission agreed that it was time to amend a 775-acre master plan community to meet the needs of 2014 that was originally envisioned in 2006. It shows your flexibility and your vision for how a very large community continues to meet the needs of the residents. In August, you also act as the Board of Adjustment, and after reviewing and participating in the conversation with the public on a unique situation with horses, you directed staff to make changes to the code that made it easier for large lot owners to have animals, even if they don't own them themselves. So thank you for even the simple solutions that you give to difficult situations. In just over the last few months, you've seen a range of rezonings and plats, and most importantly, our land development code cleanups. So each month, Jordan Feld, our senior planner, is bringing forward the types of issues with regulations that you see, that we see, our business, a community is seeing, and residents are telling us. So your work never ends, it's extremely diverse, and we thank you very much for putting us on the map for so many accomplishments in our community. I just heard a new one today. We've been considered the happiest community, and I'm happy to say that. So thank you so much for the work you do and your dedication.
Thank you, Lynan. Thank you for putting that together for us. It's nice to go back through the year and remember all the nice chicken coops that we'll have now. That takes us to Communications, item number 15, report from Chairman and members of the commission for current events. Do we have any current events?
I'd just like to remind everybody, there's a Veterans Day celebration. I think it's tomorrow here on the lawn at 11:00 a.m., but it's usually a well-attended and a good turnout, and our former council member usually heads it up. I don't know if he's heading it up this year or not, John Sens. Is he heading up the Veterans Day celebration tomorrow?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you, did you call for the, the council's message? She gave me a couple.
No.
Oh, well, that's part of her message that I'll give you.
Oh, okay, great. Well, then you can give it then.
And Betty Elsa. All right, great. Let's have a report from the council. We'll have a...
Councilmember Jen Daniels wanted me to remind you that the Veterans Celebration is tomorrow here at Town Hall at 11:00 a.m. So please attend if you can. November 20th is the Downtown Concert at the Water Tower Park and at 6:30, and then at 7 o'clock is the Christmas lighting event, which will be the Water Tower, and I'm sure it's going to be beautiful, so don't miss it. On the 22nd is the Gilbert Parade at 9:00 a.m., of course, on Gilbert Road, and also there will be a half marathon and a 10K run at 7:00 a.m. Then at 11 to 5:00 will be the Gilbert Days Festival here at the Town Hall on Civic Drive. So they'll have three stages set up for entertainment and all kinds of other fun things to do. Most importantly, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I'd like to have a report from Planning Service Manager, Linda Edwards.
I really don't have anything new, Commissioners, but as always, I very much appreciate your work and your humor, and you make our jobs fun. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And meeting adjourned?
I'm out.
Chair Ayler, we still have item four on consent agenda, but if you wish, you may adjourn the public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn the public hearing. Here are some more great, wonderful tips from, and information from Jordan Feld. For, oh, so do I have to open the study session?